Good evening. It's seven o'clock, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I called to order the Perry Township Board of Trustees meeting. Sorry. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A long day. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music Appset.
Okay. At this time, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Is it recording, Jason?
Second.
I didn't hear a say reporting. Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes. At this time, Chief Littleton, to please step up front.
He's got his wife's here. I guess she was just a couple down the road.
Okay.
Pick up when she comes in.
All right. Fiscal Officer Report, please.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank all the residents of Perry Township for taking the time to get out and vote on November eighth. We are still awaiting the results from the fire EMS levy to be certified. Um, I guess they put a notice up today that they'll be certified by Saturday, the nineteenth. Um, so hopefully we'll know more then. Uh, we've received notification that Charles E. Harrison Associates has been awarded the Perry Township biannual audit by the Ohio Auditor of State's office. Currently, we are waiting to receive the signed MOA and CFC from Charles E. Harris Associates. Um, we've been looking into other providers that are available to provide medical, dental, and vision benefits for eligible employees of Perry Township. That information was provided to the trustees previously. Have the two of you had an opportunity to look over that information?
Yeah.
I have.
Okay, are we able, are you guys able to do a motion tonight to decide whether we're going to switch over to the SACA? Because we'll have to let Montgomery County know, like, immediately if we're not going to continue on with.
The preference was the seventy-five, twenty-five?
Um, yes, the seventy-five, twenty-five, what that basically did was the employer premium stayed the same. Um, but the bet, there was better coverage plus the cost to the township for the benefits was significantly lower.
You have a language on a motion for that?
Um, yeah, I, I request the trustees to entertain a motion to transfer of medical, dental, and vision benefits currently provided through Montgomery County Human Resources to Cincinnati Benefit Solution.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Um, in preparation for the estab- establishment of the two thousand and twenty-three annual budget and for the township, I provided, again, the trustees with three different options for the employee employer cost sharing of the medical, dental, and vision benefits premium. Um, so you guys, we discussed going with the seventy-five or twenty-five, seventy-five split. So I request the trustees to entertain a motion to set the employee employer cost sharing of medical, dental, and vision benefits at twenty-five, seventy-five.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I have completed the advance request form for collection year two thousand and twenty-three. I attended the webinar from OTA Investing and Portfolio Management. And on November seventeenth, I'm planning to attend the OTA's predict, prepare, and plan with financial forecasting. I also have several if I have my other paper. Resolutions that I need to have the trustees do. I might grab that one. Jason, can I borrow yours?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, forty-seven, the supplemental reallocation of appropriations for October two thousand and twenty-two with a net increase of four thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, forty-eight, a resolution authorizing expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
So moved.
Second.
I request the trustees to entertain, oh, sorry, Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, forty-nine, a resolution to increase funds and appropriations for expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, fifty, a resolution to increase funds and appropriation in the motor vehicle license tax fund two zero, one, one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of four thousand, four hundred dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, fifty-one, a resolution to increase funds and appropriations in the gasoline tax fund two zero, two, one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, fifty-two, a resolution to increase funds and appropriation in the permissive motor vehicle tax fund twenty-two, thirty-one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to become a member of the new Lebanon Chamber of Commerce at a membership cost of zero dollars for the first year and seventy-five dollars at renewal time in April.
So moved.
Trustee, uh, Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, fifty-three, a resolution to increase funds and appropriations in the Fire District Fund twenty-one, eleven for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I request the trustees to entertain a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two, fifty-four, a resolution to increase funds and appropriations in the account code two, one, 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 two, two, zero, three, seven, zero, 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 in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
Stand anybody's way.
Oh, you're fine.
Officer Lynn, will you join me up here? So I got a, a little, uh, story here to share, uh, with everybody. On Monday, August twenty-second of this year, uh, on Officer Wynn's way home from the hospital due to a family emergency, he noticed a woman in distress. The incident took place in the nine-hundred block, the Black Lane, located in Bath Township, Green County, Ohio. Officer Wynn observed the situation and has, uh, made a quick decision to stop and investigate the situation. While speaking with Miss Coogler, he, uh, Mr. Coogler, excuse me, he stated his wife uh, was running towards the railroad tracks because she wanted to jump in front of the train and kill herself. After Officer Wynn located, uh, Ms. Coogler, uh, he was able to speak with her and prevented her from, uh, taking her own life. Once Green County deputies uh, responded, they reported, uh, observing, uh, Ms. Coogler speaking with Officer Wynn as she appeared to be embracing the conversation. Officer Wynn, having situational awareness, allowed you to make a quick and decisive assessment, uh, resulting in saving a life of a suicidal woman. Officer Wynn, the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff, and the deputies of Green County appreciate your efforts and quick thinking. As your chief, I am proud of your decision, along with your dedication to protecting life, even if it's outside of Perry Township. The way you conducted yourself on Monday, August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two reflects not only the Perry Township Police Department, uh, values, loyalty, respect, service, integrity, and courage. Your actions reflect greatly on your family, your character, and your values. I encourage you to keep moving in a positive direction and to have a positive influence on other officers, not here with Perry Township, but other officers with other agencies as well. With that being said, this is yours, sir. With that being said, I want to present to you a plaque for your life-saving measures of that, um, Ms. Coogler. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we get him? Thank you, Officer Wynn. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, wrote the cemetery report.
The Pathlock Cemetery, we had, uh, one cremation, two full burials at Pleasant Hill Cemetery, one full burial at Everfall. Um, our next cleanup day is, uh, March first, two thousand and twenty-three. Our roads, we went through our first two hundred gallons of emulsion in our dirt patcher. Uh, we also have been crack ceiling with the help of Missy. Um, she, she sat in for three days driving the truck for us so we could just keep rotating between Dave and I. Uh, we completed Sheep, Thorn Apple Schoolhouse in the section of Air Hill between Crawford Tom's Run to Johnsville Brookfield Road. Um, we are mowing with the roadside mower for a final plan this year. Our equipment, we have continued to go through our dump trucks in preparation for snow and ice, and everything's hooked up, they're ready, ready to go. Hopefully, we don't see any more white, you know, after Christmas. Uh, our near dirt patcher is cleaned up and ready for winter. Put away, the crack sealer will be back, um, next spring with two more schism materials. And so, uh, we also replaced both the doors at the maintenance building, and those are completed. Not as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, Chief, please report.
Um, I asked the board to entertain a motion and accepting the resignation from Officer Janelle Brown with an effective date of October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I also asked the board to entertain a motion accepting the resignation of Jamie Grill with an effective date of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Uh, in the month of October, I've completed the FBI Executive Leadership Course. I've completed, uh, the FTO course along with, uh, Sergeant Douglas. I've fulfilled numerous public records requests. Uh, currently, Detective Sergeant Waymeyer and I are working with Lexipool, uh, who writes our policies and, uh, procedures uh, with obtaining and writing with for grants, uh, to get different equipment, uh, and different things that we could use here in the, the township. Uh, the OVI contract, uh, was signed by the board, and it's been emailed uh, down to the city of Dayton. I'm just waiting for the acceptance back, uh, which I believe, uh, just waiting on the law director to sign off on the contract, and then it'll be mailed back to us. Well, with the ARPS Fund, um, we ordered our ballistic shield, and it is set to ship out December ninth. Also with those funds, um, we had ordered new mobile radios for the in-car and modems, um, they were been ordered from P and R. Last time I spoke with Jamie, uh, who is my rep down at P and R, we're waiting for one more piece of equipment to come in, as then they'll be out to do the install for both the modems and the mobiles.
Excellent.
So I'm hoping that will be completed prior to the end of the year.
Okay.
Uh, worked with Ed's Heating and Cooling, uh, to get the heat fixed and dampers replaced here in the building. Uh, our October stats, uh, are completed and they're posted to our website. Shop with a Cop, uh, is set for December tenth. Uh, we will meet here at the building at nine AM. Uh, at ten AM, we'll convoy over, uh, to Meyer and let the kids do some shopping. After that, we'll go to lunch, um, lunch is to be determined at this time. Uh, we're accepting donations, uh, up until December second. Uh, this way, it'll give us time to, uh, count all the donations that have come in and be able to bind those up, uh, for some families. Uh, currently, we have one family participating, uh, with Shop with a Cop. Uh, we're working with a second family. Um, and my hopes is, is I can get one more, and all three of these families would be within the jurisdiction of Perry Township.
And I did talk to Sandra just now, and she'll be there with the kids.
Okay.
She'll let you know how many.
Perfect.
Okay.
Um, Ed, for the month of October, uh, two hundred and twenty-two and a half hours was put in.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I was on your report.
The, uh, BCA that was scheduled, or the BCA hearing that was scheduled for Thursday, October thirteenth, uh, for a lot split has been rescheduled for Thursday, December first at seven PM. Um, right now, I have five pending permits. I've issued two permits since the last trustee meeting. One was for a barn and one was for a barn extension. And I want to remind everybody to check with this office before building or putting out a pool, not that you're going to do it now, um, or shipping containers or anything. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, the trustee reports. Uh, I've continued to administer and update the township's social media, perform routine maintenance on the township, uh, PCs, perform general IT management and upkeep of the township's systems. I prefer, continued my weekly drives through the township for inspections of roads, cemeteries, and nuisance properties. Uh, with the police department, I've worked with, uh, the chief on the, uh, new timesheet and payroll process and support discussions on the Township K nine program. I also attended the OPWC meeting on November second for the scoring of, uh, applications across the county. Uh, I think we did well. Uh, but the official scores haven't come out yet, so that is all I have. Trustee Mears?
Uh, okay, first off, I want to thank everyone who, who did come out and vote. Uh, and then I did meet with, uh, Mr. Hoops, Mr. Steck, and Ms. Grill, and we've gone over the budget a couple of different times. Um, have helped crack and seal on Air Hill Road. I was driving, there was someone driving in the dope, need a booster seat. Uh, met and discussed a couple of projects that Ms. Kaler has going on, and I, uh, attended the Veterans Luncheon at Rob's Restaurant. I'd like to thank Chief Littleton and our police department for their help, and also thank you to Brookville Police Department, Clay Township, and also the city manager of Ms. Keaton for, for attending also. And, um, I did attend the Brookville City Council meeting. And I guess I can bring this up. Um, I've been in contact with, uh, Lacy Aitman, who is in New Lebanon with the, um, Chamber, Board of Chambers, and I have been approached or received phone calls regarding the, uh, energy aggregation. They have a new thing now, so if anybody wants to join it, you just get on Facebook or call Ms. Aitman, or the, I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce in New Lebanon, and you can get your VPL bill or your AES bill lowered. So if you need help or information, just give me a call, but usually just Chamber of Commerce in New Lebanon. Anything else? Like, I got a quote today, and it was eight point nine nine.
That was eight point four nine.
Eight point four nine.
Yeah.
And mine, my DMP is like ten point, so that's going to be able to save me some money. So if you are interested, they're going to take any of our residents, so just give them a call. That's all I got.
Thank you. Old business, new old business to deal with. Okay, new business? You don't have any new business? No new business? All right.
Sir, if, yeah, we can go back and revisit the, um, Neighborhood Watch Program.
Yes.
I know that was still up on, uh, our websites. Uh, we did receive some interest, it looked like.
Yeah.
Um, so I would like to move forward uh, at least, uh, setting up a meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully, the residents that expressed interest um, will come to this meeting so we can start getting some things laid out, getting some input uh, from the residents and everything with the, uh, Neighborhood Watch.
You want to try to do that before the end of the year, or do you want to wait until after the first of the year?
Let's wait till after the first of the year.
Okay.
Um, that way I can get some more, uh, documents gathered up.
Okay.
Uh, get it tailored to Perry Township.
Right.
And not the other municipalities where we've pulled from.
Right.
Um, the other thing that I'm entertaining, uh, that I want to try to work in uh, is doing at least maybe a chief's roundtable, and I've picked this up from a few other chiefs that do this at least once a quarter. Um, the residents can come in, um, ask questions about the police department, the operations, kind of the day-to-day, um, and just kind of get their input, uh, from their perspective of the police department. And that'll give them an opportunity, like I said, to ask questions. We can do a Q and A session. Um, I could also have my sergeants available if need be, but it's just start off as a chief and the residents.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think it's.
You will. That'll be well received.
I did have one thing for the new business.
Yes.
Um, and I forgot this in my report that I've been working, I've sat and met with the chief, and I've also met with Caleb to work on the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And I know that I had sent messages to the, each of the trustees about meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-second to discuss kind of a work session for the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Are we still good for that? We didn't discuss a time either.
So Tuesdays are notoriously bad for me, just because of the distance I have to cover. Um, and I think this working session would likely be longer than a
Yeah.
township meeting. So i- if we could do it any other day next week as a working session.
Well, except for Thursday.
Except for Thursday, yes. Or even Friday. Um.
I mean, I'm, I'm free for Fridays.
Yeah.
If you guys are.
Um,
I know we have to check.
I could make it, I could make it work for like six PM on Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to push it out too far, but understand that, you know, that's a lot of how the sausage is made. There's a lot of details we have to go through, so it could stretch into the evening. Um, so if there's a way to push it just to Wednesday, then I'm good from five o'clock on, but.
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town on Wednesday, so.
We, and, and with using being on town, maybe we should go the following week or last week, Thanksgiving, maybe the week after that.
He's supposed to be back, isn't he supposed to be back for?
He'll be back, yes, twentieth.
Yeah, he'll be back for the twentieth for a couple of days.
So. I mean, we could look at the.
Let's just, let's just hold it on Tuesday.
On the twelfth.
Get on Tuesday, uh, six PM.
Okay, at least to get it started and.
Yeah. Then we'll have, you know, the, the goal is to have that before the end of, have the budget finalized before the end of December for your.
We have to have it.
Right, we do, but, yeah.
Hopefully, by the middle of December's my goal.
Right.
But like I said, I've met with them, so a lot of like the police and the roads and stuff being me providing you with what their thoughts are and how we see things going.
Okay.
That's twenty-second at two, or it's o'clock, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any other business that we have?
I don't have anything.
All right, we will move to the visitors. Uh, Ms. Brumback.
Hi, I'm Debbie Brumback, and, uh, did you see the, uh, new police cams that Columbus got?
Yes.
Top ten thousand dollars person.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I know you can't spend money that you really don't have yet, but um, the fire, we aren't going to need all that money for the fire department, right?
We have to use it all.
It can only be used there.
It can't go anywhere else because it's a fire, fire levy. All the funds are restricted and have to go to the fire. Because that would be awesome.
We already have body cams. We went with watch guard because it was about a thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Oh, really?
Between the two. Um, if I recall, about a five, with, with the five-year lease, we were looking about sixty or seventy thousand dollars with, um, watch guard, we were looking, I think, right about twenty. I mean, don't hold me to that, but it was significantly cheaper.
It just seemed like, um, the report that they did on it, it was, it was so much safer for everybody. And police officers, the community, even the perpetrators have, um, and so I just wondered if there was a way for us to get something that good. Um, the other thing was, a couple meetings ago, you said something about, um, next year, we'd be doing a police levy. And uh, I was wondering how long this might really be for you, if, how long and how much that will cost to put that in as a levy.
It'll just depend. There's a lot of stuff that hasn't even definitely been decided yet that we're going to do the levy. But we have, there has to be research and stuff go into it to determine what kind of millage we need. We don't have any of that information yet.
Because I saw where Beaver Creek had put in for a building for the police, a new building, and I felt like they were upfront about what they wanted their levy for. And the residents said, turned it down, voted against it. And so I wondered if, do, does that have to be that specific for the police levy?
When they're doing something like that, typically it does because it requires a larger levy to be done, to be able to pay for that.
Now, we also have other options, like working with USDA on a fixed for a municipality.
Oh, yeah.
We can, we can, and that's something we've discussed is, you know, should we, shouldn't we, what should we include in the budget that would be conveyed in a levy? Um, and what do we need to do outside of it?
Um, well, certainly, a guy restroom should be in there. I mean.
Well, a restroom, showers, you know, for the, for the police, a holding area, a secure, uh, evidence room, all sorts of stuff that we don't have because for a very long time, we've, this township has leveraged this schoolhouse slash garage slash schoolhouse slash garage. It's been a couple of different things over its history, so, um, you, you heard earlier that we were, uh, once again, working on the heat. That has almost become an annual thing now where we have something different goes wrong with the heat. When it gets hot, something goes wrong with the air conditioner. Um, we've lost power. We had to put in a, a plug so that we can connect a generator so that the police can operate when the power goes out.
We talked about that a couple.
Did, and.
Meetings.
We used some of the ARPA funds for that. Um, so we, like, like Fiscal Officer Grill said, we, we have a lot of research to figure out what the police budget needs to be, and then that would be conveyed in the levy. So to operate a twenty-four-seven police presence, you know, the overlapping capability of avoiding people being on vacation or not being available to work, what it takes to build that force. Chief has been working on that for about a year and a half now. Um, so that's going to be conveyed into the budget, too.
So the other question is, is this was, this is pretty central. This building here is pretty central. So would the new building? Are you looking at?
In a, in a hypothetical.
Okay.
Um, we have, I've discussed that we have additional property out of the maintenance garage. It's less central.
Yeah.
But it's land that we own.
Oh.
Anything that's done here, um, this building would have to be torn down. And, uh, we, we did have a discussion, I think it was last year, about trying to fit a new building off to the side.
And.
Well, we'd have to move the leach. It, it gets very complicated. Off to the side, but we'd have to move the leach. It, it gets very complicated to do it here.
Right.
Um. The, the other thing that we had talked about is maybe putting the police out there with the garage, the maintenance garage in that same area. But then we would all, that would impact bounce times and whatnot as well, so. There's a lot of research to be done as to what goes in, what doesn't go in, and also what, what the township needs to do over the next five to ten years because, uh, some of the, some of the infrastructure we have is unsustainable.
Right. It is. And I was glad to hear you say that you were gonna open up once a month for, uh, for the community to come and talk to, to you first.
I, I, it's going to be once a quarter.
Oh, once a quarter, yeah. Whatever it is, it's going to be better than what we have now.
Right.
So I think that's a good idea.
Right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.